So Steve White, can you please come forward so we can swear it was moderator? With three written ballots.
They were. It's up to mine.
You got this. Get around two minutes start. Hi Steve White, swear that I'll I gotta see it. Just swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and the state of Maine so long as I shall continue as citizen thereof, so help me God.
Thank you. And?
I, Steve White, do swear that I will faithfully discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as moderator according to the Constitution, laws of the state of Maine, and ordinances of the town of Bussel, so help me God.
Thank you.
I'm going to just sign. Okay, thank you very much. Are we working here?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. What a deal. This is pretty good. They told me noon time today that two people had come in to pick up their warrants, so we did better than that. That's great. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. Yep, gotcha. All right, let's begin with Article Two to see if the town will vote to that will appropriate $64,500 from the undesignated fund balance for demolition of the Ethel Bisbee School. There's a, if you have your green sheet here, or if you can see the screen, there's an explanation of what that's all about, and it says that a capital improvement reserve account called account number 87 for Ethel Bisbee demolition contains a balance of $73,500. That's money that has been collected in that reserve account over time, as I understand it. Secondly, a current bid price of $124,500 was received on January 4th, 2023, and it will be honored by cross excavation if the project can be substantially complete by April 1st, 2023. The recommended appropriation will bridge the gap and allow the lawful demolition to go forward in 2023. And the fourth point is that the town's undesignated balance right now, or was on June 30th, 2022, was $3,923,021, according to their most recent audit. So the question is, in Article Three, I'll look for a motion to approve that. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the body approve Article Two as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion? If you're gonna speak, come to the microphone, please.
There are a lot of neighbors, there are a lot of neighbors to the Ethel Bisbee School here at this meeting tonight, and I think we're all really concerned that we have a voice going forward before we vote to approve this demolition. I don't have confidence in that, so I would like to address this very seriously, or I can't support it.
Can you explain why you can't support the demolition?
Because something's gonna happen to the property after, and we feel like there's a lack of engagement with the town.
Oh, okay, well, we're working today on the demolition part of it, but the town owns the property, and the town will continue to own the property after the
My understanding, my understanding is, is that the select board feels that they have been empowered to dispose of and do what they want with the property without coming back to and discussing it with the neighborhood. An example of this was, we went through over the summer, last summer, many weeks of non-stop dump truck runs bringing in gravel to build this new skating rink. Now, nothing against the new skating rink, but this was, we had no notion. So it's, you have a lot of neighbors here who are asking, particularly the select board, you've got people who want to engage, they didn't want to do it before, they want to now engage us. Don't, don't turn us into enemies.
No.
Okay.
I think that's what we're here for. Thank you. So let me have a discussion?
Katie Getchell from 39 Chapman Street. Sorry, closer to that. As many of you know, I feel the town's ownership of the Bisbee School and Lot presents a unique opportunity to assess the growing town's needs through a creative, inclusive process. While I would have preferred to know more about the town's vision for the future of the site before the demolition of the building, in the interest of moving forwards towards that process, I support the appropriation of funds. I'll continue to work with the town manager and select board in hopes of community involvement in the decision of how this unique parcel can best serve the needs of the town now and into the future.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Hi, I'm Laura Allen Toman, and I just have a couple of questions. The mitigation that was discussed a couple of meetings ago, I was curious where things ended up with that. At the time, there was no document showing that any mitigation had been done, and there was concern about how much money it was gonna cost to do it. And I'd like to know where we are with the mitigation, or if that's going to be something that sort of is added on to the cost here.
Do you know what the litigation was about?
It's asbestos and lead and that type of thing. And the concern was that going forward, if there, there wasn't some sort of containment, or at least inspection process, that you're gonna have hazardous materials afterwards. So that's, that's one of my questions. And then the other one is that I think out of fairness to everyone, we should have some idea of how this property is going to be used. We have a lot of needs in here, and there are things that I feel comfortable supporting, but we're talking about a lot of money for a new building eventually, and I would like to sort of see where things are going before we take additional funds. We have a lot of things that are coming up in this town that need to be taken care of, and I would like a bit of a roadmap.
Mike, can you speak to the litigation issue?
The litigation with the asbestos has not completed, and it was $13,000 that was completed late last week when we inspected it.
Was this, was something about lead?
The report didn't show anything with the lead, it was just the asbestos on the report. Inspection was done and could have taken care of.
Thank you. All right, anybody else like to speak on this?
My name is Whitaker. What is the plan? And are you all universally in support of the demolition?
I don't think we have a formal plan as of yet, but we're gonna do it a lot, but I am in support of the demolition because it's the one where it needs a lot of work and isn't one where people break into the building, and it's a safety issue in my eyes.
I mean, this was, this was taken up, and obviously, we all agreed that it was a safety issue and that it needed to be done. As far as what's going in, in the future, everybody will be aware of what is proposed and what is needed, and we know there's a lot that's needed.
I think we need to bear in mind that, that the property will still be there, will still be in the ownership of the town. The question is, do we want to do away with the building, or do we want to keep it there? Yes?
I have a clarifying question. So the improvement count is $73,500, you're asking for an additional $64,500. That's $13,000 more than the amount listed. Is that $13,000 for the mitigation for asbestos?
That $13,000 was the one we just paid out for the asbestos.
Thank you.
So was that the answer, that that was on top of the 124.5?
Yes, the amount was 124.5 plus the 13 for the asbestos removal.
Just wanted to follow up there. I heard from two of you, and there's a couple more. So Lori, yes, you'd like to support the demolition? Frank, I didn't hear from you?
Yeah, I do support the demolition.
And Meryl?
Okay, great.
So just historically, there's been no formal RFP put out for the redevelopment of that site. There will be no formal RFP going forward, so we're just, you all are making decisions about what's best for this property, and you have a plan.
I don't think any of us
Can you use the microphone?
Hello. Okay. I don't think any of us have gotten together and have a plan per se that we all agree with. I have a personal idealistic plan that I would like to see happen, but I don't think it's been communicated enough to say that everyone is on board. Obviously, I want an inclusive process, but yeah, I guess.
Like I said earlier, we have no plans that, like, inclusive plans, but whatever, I feel whatever we do decide to go is gonna have to come town meeting anyways, for the whole town to decide upon what that property will be used for in the future.
I think that's, that's what people are concerned about, and I'm sure that that would be the case, that there will be a well-vetted looking at plans. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Eric, born 59 Mason Street. I appreciate the comment, I appreciate the comments of the chair, just, I appreciate the comment that the chair just made. I would like to query the rest of the board members to ensure that they're of a similar opinion, that any decisions that are made will be brought to the town for a vote before action is taken.
It has to be.
That's code.
Of course.
It's code.
With respect to the issue at hand, and the reason I think that most people are here, is that they feel that permission was given at a previous town meeting for the board to act without any additional input from the city, from the town members. And we're trying to ensure that the situation exists, that we have those, we have those conversations prior to it coming to a vote at another town meeting.
Are you, are you talking about the 2017
Correct.
That meeting?
Right.
Okay. That meeting was, the question before that meeting was, did they want to sell the property? Very different question, but, and they went foot in, that was, was voted in. What, nobody wanted to buy it? What, Wade wanted to buy it, didn't want his money?
Do you want me to talk about that, Steve? And how that, how that felt like?
You'll go ahead.
I guess I would just like to remind people that my wife Beth and I did offer $60,000 for the property to redevelop it. That was five years ago. That property would be back on the tax walls earning. At the time, there was a committee that was assembled, a decision was made, and then the committee dispersed, a weekend passed, the committee came back and had a meeting without two of the committee members, and made a decision not to accept our proposal. To me, it felt like we were completely hoodwinked through the entire process. So that's why I'm asking, has there been a formal request for proposals for the redevelopment of that property? We have acute housing needs in this, in this area. We have acute needs for businesses to grow in this area. How have we put it out to private developers to put that property to its best use?
Anybody want to speak to that? Where, where does the select board stand?
Have a mic? Hi. I am approved, I want approval of the demolition because the building is very unsafe. Now, the question that everybody is wondering about is the fact that we did have it put out to, put up for sale. We didn't get the amount that we, the town felt that we needed, the board felt that we needed. So we took it off of the register for sale. Now, there is a lot of need in this town, yes. There is affordable housing, we need a bigger ambulance garage, we need a new town space to be able to have meetings like this, and we have growing needs in the town office also. There is not enough space in the town office for everything. So those are some of the challenges that we are trying to meet, but according to the code of Bethel, everything that we propose has to come before the town for a vote. We can't do anything. We can suggest things, but we are not authorized to do anything without the town vote. Thank you, Wade.
Hey, so I'm near to town, like, in the last 10 years. So I voted in the last few elections. I didn't know this was happening tonight, except that I'm a member of the Gem, so I got an email. My husband didn't know it's happening, my in-laws don't know it's happening, nor do none, I have about 20 family members who are all born and bred in Bethel, I'm the only one that moved in. No one knew this was happening. They're for everything, which is great, I'm voting, you know, for them, but it wasn't sent in our mail. I didn't receive any mail, no emails. How does that, so again, like, I'm great for, for any structure that needs to be taken down, taken down, but when it comes to making the plan, how do we notify the citizens? I got an email from the Gem Theater, because I support the movies, that there's a town meeting tonight. I'm a registered voter, I voted in the last four elections in Bethel. I'm not on Facebook. How are we gonna let people know? And, and this is a really serious question. How do we notify? Look around. This is Bethel. How did people find out? Like, this is great that we're making these plans, but, but how do we notify the voters for the next steps? How do we keep people informed, in touch? This is very important. Sorry.
Thank you. Natalie, could you tell us how, how the, the meeting was, was advertised? All right, that's right, we need, we need, Natalie lives out of town, so in order for her to speak tonight, we need I'm opposed to allowing non-residents to speak.
I'll take the motion.
Second. All in favor of non-residents speaking? Thank you. Unopposed? Okay, you may go.
Well, you did that. You did that really quick, thank you. So we do post it on the town website, it is on Facebook, it is posted and on the office windows, the newspaper is notified, there was a sign-up sheet outside for you to leave your emails. We don't have your emails, you don't supply your emails usually to the town office. So we've joined the Chamber of Commerce, so the Chamber of Commerce has been notifying, posting on town events, meetings that we have, important decisions coming up before the town. I don't believe I've left anything else out, but that's
I think you can sign up for alerts on the calendar. Sarah Getchell did that.
And, yeah.
Yeah, I think you can sign up.
And so we're double checking, I know that there was an alert sign-up on the calendar, but apparently that's a bit spotty, so we're checking up to see where the breakdown is on that.
My parents have been in this town for 90 years, since before it was Bethel, they went to Gould, they live on Paradise Hill. They don't do their email. They, they don't do any of this. Is there a reason we can't send it out via mail to registered voters?
Cost.
So can we vote on the cost?
Well, the owners have to be on that as well, because also, we're not gonna sit there and mail it out to everybody.
But, but there's a lot, there are a lot of people in Bethel that do not have access to the information you're posting to vote.
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
We are not giving access to everybody in Bethel who needs to vote. And we are not telling them when they can vote. We are not telling them where they can vote.
If they have an email, then they can give that to the town office, and they will be
What you're saying, they don't, they don't have their
My mother-in-law and father-in-law have lived in this town since before it was here. They both went to Gould, they live on Paradise, they are 91 years old. They cannot send you their email, and I texted them on the way here tonight. I said, hey, there's a meeting. They had no idea.
If there is no way that they have email or anything like that, then I will happily make arrangements for them to, to be mailed, or notification.
But there's a lot of people like that in this town that have opinions. I just, I just feel like this was called really quickly. Again, I'm for, I'm, you know, I think this is great, I'm voting, but, but I feel like I'm here to represent people that did not get notified. And I'm, my entire family did not know this was happening, and they were, they've all been in this town for a long time, and I only got notice because, again, I'm a donor to this theater. And so I'm concerned about the voting, and what's happening, and who's notified. And, and I just don't think it's fair, I'm not sure it's quite legal, and I think it should really be addressed at the notification level. That's what I'm discussing.
No, it's definitely legal.
Okay, okay.
So thanks, thank you for bringing that up.
Let's have our conversations come through to the moderator, please. Thank you. Any other comments?
First of all, thank you guys and everyone here tonight. I'm Amy Halsted, I live at 47 Chapman Street. And given the immediacy of the demolition, what, and this may have been covered before, I've been trying to follow closely, but I'd like to know what the timeline is after the demolition. When are we talking about what we're gonna do, how are we gonna, I mean, I know we need to work all that out, but what is the timeline once that building is torn down? Thanks.
Is there an answer for that?
There is no timeline at this point that I can think of, because we're not 100% sure what's gonna happen with that property. If it's gonna be committees discuss what's gonna possibly go there, and then have to go to town vote, so there's no definite timeline at this point.
I would expect that it would come up before the, the annual meeting, the annual town meeting.
Perhaps I can clarify the timeline for talking about possible use. Okay, not the timeline of when something gets started, but it really is the community engagement piece for what we do. Like, personally, I think soon would be great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Phil Getchell, I'm also on Chapman Street, and I'll try to be brief, because I've mentioned this at meetings already, but because we're taping it, I wanted to just articulate, I, I think there are kind of three different facets or aspects of people's concerns about the process of what happens with the school. I appreciate what Wade mentioned about, or asked, I don't know if it was, I think it was answered, maybe it's a good idea to enlist the help of some sort of expert friends or people that would want to develop it to get ideas about what could happen at the site, you know, maybe folks who are in tune with the needs of the community. Second, I just want to differentiate between what's legal or what's could happen by the, the town government versus what the, the community and the neighborhood might really appreciate and want to see happen. It might be, according to the rules or the code, it might be okay for something just to get brought to a vote, fully fleshed out, there might be a plan created that gets brought to a vote, but that is very different from including some of the people in the community that might offer help, expertise, or just have concerns as to what will happen, could happen. I understand as, as well as anybody, I think that the, the rules might be that the board, whomever is on the board at the time, may not need to listen or do everything that's suggested, but I think it would be a great opportunity to address these concerns. So thank you for the time, and thank you for your service. Thanks.
Natalie, could you, could you talk to how that would go? Would there be, be extensive hearings prior to the town meeting, or to the vote?
Ultimately, it's gonna be the will of the select board. If a, if a resident would like to bring it forward to the board and request that, then the board gets to decide whether or not they would like to start that procedure as far as a committee, an exploratory or an ad hoc committee, much like what they started before, and since enough time has passed that it would probably deserve to be looked at again. And if that is not something that the board would like to entertain, then, then you would follow the procedure for putting it on the annual town warrant, which would be to start a petition, and, and get approximately 100, I believe it is, I don't know what the exact count is based on the last election, gubernatorial election, so to have that put on the annual town warrant. But it would start at the select board meeting with that discussion with the board.
Hi, Rachel Gueye, I live in
Could you speak up a little bit?
Sorry, I have a cold, so I just don't want to spread it to everybody. I had a couple of questions in regards to the honoring of that price for substantially complete. Can you elaborate and give more color on that by April 1st? And the reason why I ask is, we got tons of snow out there, getting the ice rink dismantled is going to potentially be kind of an issue, are you able to work around it along with what is that substantially complete? Is there any kind of documentation or roadmap set up by CROPS in order to determine what that qualification is?
So in their bid that they gave, there is some leeway, it has some flexibility, obviously, on both sides because of the weather, and, and it would be because of the weather, it's not because the ice rink is trying to get a couple more weeks of skating in.
You just can't disassemble it until like the ice melts, like, it's really hard to pull it apart until everything is like melted through, and that's what I'm asking in regards to that. It's not because there's more skating, it's just because it's cold at night, and it has to be liquid enough for it to be removed. It's not a selfish reason, it's actually a weather reason.
So that would take a conversation as far as, and, because they, the bid was based on them being able, and the bid price was based on them being able to do it during mud season.
Okay.
So if it went beyond like mud season, then their price would go up.
Okay. And do we know, can you quantify what substantially complete is?
Mostly.
Is there any other, is there any other discussion?
My name is Tom Ziccarelli, and I live next door to the school. I think it's a nice old building, there's some people who couldn't be here tonight who wanted to preserve it as a historical landmark, and I think it really, it's a shame that it didn't get sold to Wade and Beth. It would have been a great use for it, and I hope we can reconsider that going forward.
Anybody else?
I'm beating a dead horse here, I'm sorry. I, I've asked, I think twice now, I'm gonna ask, why has there not been a formal request for proposals for the redevelopment of that property to meet the town's goals? The town, as a select board, can create a point system that reflects your goals. You can release that to the world, you can take ideas from other people, you can ask for ideas on how to redevelop that site, you can balance income, you can
to do it during mud season.
Okay.
So, if it went beyond, like, mud season, then their price would go up.
Okay. And do we know... Can you quantify what substantially complete is?
Is there any other discussion?
My name is Tom Ziccarelli, and I live next door to the school. I think it's a nice old building. There's some people who couldn't be here tonight who wanted to preserve it as a historical landmark. And I think it really... It's a shame that it didn't get sold to Wade and Beth. It would have been a great use for it, and I hope we can reconsider that going forward.
I'm beating a dead horse here. I'm sorry. I've asked, I think, twice now. I'm going to ask, why has there not been a formal request for proposals for the redevelopment of that property to meet the town's goals? The town, as a select board, can create a point system that reflects your goals. You can release that to the world. You can take ideas from other people. You can ask for ideas on how to redevelop that site. You can balance income. You can balance community need. You can do all these things in a formal RFP process. For anybody else like me, I've responded to two of these this week. This is how the world functions. There's currently an RFP out for the redevelopment of the Garand property. Why have we not done this for this property? I'd like to hear five answers from five select board members. Thank you.
No, you didn't say...
It's a good idea, Wade, to start taking consideration. Something that I've never heard of doing RFP for.
Lori, five years.
It's been five years, yes. There's been discussion. We had COVID going on, and the board has had some ideas, but nothing has been formalized. There was more studies that some board members at the time asked to have done to see what we could do going forward, and that's where we are. And I'm all for seeing what we can do to redevelop the property for both needs that the town has.
I guess what we have to say at this point is we have to go forward. I mean, we can't go back. It was five years ago, and we just have to go forward. It's a great idea, and we'd love to go forward with it.
The first thing I would say to answer this is, I just got here in June on the board. And the next thing is, is that I've been going to the meetings since January. So, I had six months of practice before I got there. And the one thing that I've noticed is that not too many residents show up to these meetings. The board is kind of left there making decisions before I got here and now, with not a lot of input from citizens. And it's really helpful when citizens do show up, because you have their input and kind of keeps things in check. And I think the check is very, very important. To... It makes us responsible and being responsible to you, the public. So, I think before any decisions are made to do with that property, that we really need to analyze all the needs throughout the town and kind of prioritize them, kind of get a blueprint of how we should move forward. I think that in the past, the town is always playing catch-up to a problem that could have been resolved prior to, for instance, maintenance on buildings don't get done because they don't want to spend the money on it. Then it comes up, it's cost twice as much to do a year later. That stuff, we need to plan it better. And that's my idea of coming to the board, is kind of getting out in front of it. I've only been here for six months. I'm just... I think it's been a little over six months. But that's my plan, is to try to get us to move, to be thinking out forward and not being reactive, but having a... Working with a plan. So, to tell you what I want to do with that is not... I don't know what I want to do. I want to get a plan together and work off of a plan. That's where I'm coming from. And that's what I can give you tonight.
Thank you, Frank. Do you think that, as a selectman, do you think that you'll have the opportunity to request ideas from the community? I think that's what everybody's waiting to hear.
I think that's what I just said. Come up with a plan, and that's... That comes from the community of what our needs are. And coming to the meetings will help that.
I would just say that I'd like to thank Josh for being here. As a parent of a nine, a seven, and a three-year-old, a six-to-seven meeting is really hard to make. I have been attending virtually, and so I do feel somewhat informed. I wouldn't, you know, just say that before we allocate all these funds to demo this building, maybe you do the RFP first.
Lori, did you want to say anything?
Is this on? Yeah, okay. I think that you bring up a really good point. And I think that an RFP would be really good for us to work on. But the problem is, is right now, we need to get the building down because of the problems that are going on with the building. We just had all the asbestos taken out. So, in the condition of the building, even though it's historic, we tried to save it. We couldn't. It just got beyond repair. So, now, the problem is, is we have to get it down in order to be able to save money, which is what we are trying to do right now. If we wait and try to do this in six months, or even three months, it's going to cost a lot more. Right now, we have a bid with Cross Excavation to get this done during mud season, and that's what we're trying to do, so that we can move forward from this point on and be able to figure out what the town needs are and what we can incorporate in that land, on that piece of property. The town is not going to sell it. We're going to keep the property. And we... But we need to know what the needs of the town are. We sit in our meetings, and we have maybe two or three townspeople show up for the meetings. Scott can tell you, he's there for every one of them. We don't get... Huh? I've never seen a notification. It is every first and third Wednesday of the month. It is... That is the... I'm new. I'm sorry. I'm new. I didn't know. This is like my first. I don't mean to shout out your turn. I'm just saying some of us just don't know in the town.
Let's speak through the microphone.
Sorry, sorry. There is a calendar on the town website, and it shows when all the board meetings are.
There's no board meeting scheduled in the future on that calendar. Sorry. Everyone get out and walk all the way over to make that call. There's nothing on your website that tells you when the future meetings are scheduled. I do what we want to do.
I'm sorry, but that's what I have been informed that. And I have looked at the... I have looked at the calendar, and...
My experience is that they're not listed. They might show up the day of the meeting. There's a link to a website on the site, but there's no list going forward of when this is hit.
That's something we'll have to work on, then.
Hi, Laura Allen, Tumnham, Melhill Road. You mentioned the problems with the Ethel Bisbee Building. Could you tell me what they are, just so that I have an understanding of this sense of urgency that seems to exist? Because otherwise, I agree with Wade. I think that we should be getting the information, have a long-term plan in place before it's done, before the demolition, spending $125,000 on that without having any idea where we're going. Just doesn't work for me.
Anybody want to speak to the... Problems with the building as it sits now?
So, I don't have a mic. Can you hear me?
Oh, you got a mic.
Thank you. So, there's broken windows. Some of the windows have been boarded up. You board one up, one... Another one's broken. Thank you. You board one up... Sorry. You board one up, another one's broken. People have figured out how to reach in and unlock windows. There's drug paraphernalia in there. There's evidence that people have been sleeping down there. So, because of that, it's obviously people are going in there. Somebody gets hurt in there. It's a liability against the town. We don't want to take that risk.
I'm Bo Bowden. I owned Acupro Inspections. I retired last year. I did the inspection of that whole building for a dollar for the town. That's the one that was posted on my website for free. Anybody could go look at. Copies were given to the select board. At that time, there was significant amount of roof damage, moisture intrusion. At that time, it was salvageable. If nothing's been done to that building since that time, and it's been many years, I can see where that's a big problem with restoration that's going to cost way more than any private person's going to want to pay for. Okay? So, and I can... At the time, there was lots of broken windows. They had a lot of damage on the exterior. All that was salvageable because it was structurally sound and could be saved. In my knowledge of home inspections and commercial inspections, I can tell you that if nothing's been done, that is a safety hazard. Thank you. Mr. Lark?
I'd like to move the question.
Second.
All right. All in favor of moving the question? All opposed? Okay. You voted. So, we're on to vote on Article 2, which again is to see if the town will appropriate $64,500 from its undesignated funds balance for the demolition of the Ethel Bisbee School. And I think we're pretty clear that that's the only thing that we're voting on at this point. So, bring your ballots in, please, for Article 2. Or do we... You don't need to... Okay. A show of hands. Excuse me. All in favor? Opposed? And it has passed. All right. Thank you very much. The next piece of business is Article 3, to see if the town will redesignate the balance of $23,000 from Capital Improvement Reserve Account Number 89, which is the Vernon Street sidewalk, to Capital Improvement Reserve Account Number 96, which is Route 2 sidewalk. The explanation that we have here, and you can see on your green sheet, the second one, is that Main DOT has a scope of work for 2024 that encompasses bicycle, pedestrian, on-road, sidewalk, and trail, beginning at Route 2, at the Route 2 overpass and extending north for 3/10 of a mile. The estimated funding is $550,000. The town's estimated required contribution would be $110,000. The estimates provided are from 2020. Capital Improvement Reserve Account Number 96, that's the Route 2 sidewalk, contains a balance of $30,000. And then it says this will leave an estimated remainder of $57,000. And that, as I understand it, means that if we take the $23,000, which is what we want, who are being asked to vote on, and the $30,000, then that'll give us... That'll leave us with a need to raise $57,000 more to make the $110,000. And the Main DOT will provide an accurate amount as billing progresses, whatever that means. Yes, Scott?
Will you approve Article 3 as presented, or...
Right. Moved. Is there a second? We have a second? Can I see it? Okay. They're moving the second in. We do this with a show of hands as well? Well, yeah. Is there any discussion? Anybody else? Have we discussed that? Yes, Lori?
What side of the corridor is this going to be built on by the path and sidewalk? Is it on one side only, both sides? Just curious.
It's on one side and it's the... It's the opposite side. It's just on the side of the main road. Yeah.
Okay. Great. I fully support that, I think.
What was the answer?
It's on one side. It's on the side of the rusting lane towards the park.
You just going to hook up to the walking path?
Yes.
I think that's a great idea. There's more and more people walking, exercising, and wanting to not use their cars, so I'm very much in favor of this.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Opposed? unanimous. Pretty like that. All right. Thank you.
Will you adjourn?
All right. You may vote with your feet.
Thank you very much for coming.